Does the red dot mean we're on? Oh, I guess that does. Good evening. We're going to call this meeting to order at 7:05 on October 4th. We'll open with a pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Fawnen.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Arman.
Here.
Councilor Candelora.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Manna.
Here.
Councilor Miller.
Here.
The first order of business of the minutes of the previous meeting of September 20, 2016.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Corrections?
Yes, sir.
Extensively, because I've been essentially left off of this minutes in the meeting. Number one, roll call. I was here. Number two, review of previous minutes. The vote does include me, and I'm not both for and abstaining. I'm for. So we should delete the abstaining. Number three, under number 12, unfinished business, the vote is correctly heat zero. I'm left off on the vote affirmatively. Under reauthorization of Poco Festival Coordinator, it's the same thing. It is again the same thing under new business, which is the review of the 824 referral on capital improvements. It is again the same under appropriations transfer, and again the same under tax refunds. And assuredly, I voted for adjournment.
But you weren't at the September 6th meeting.
This was the September 20th meeting.
Right, but then the motion, the minutes, the review of the previous minutes from September 6th where you said for and abstain, so.
On the September 20th minutes is what I'm referring to.
Right, that's what I have here.
Yeah.
But on the abstention would be correct for the September 6th minutes.
Right.
But the for would be not.
Yes, that's correct.
So you wouldn't have been in the roll call. Oh, the roll call, sorry. The roll call is for the September 20th meeting.
Right. Not roll call vote?
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnen?
No. September 20th, I was not here for that. So abstain. So we're on the 20th, right?
Right.
Correction? Okay.
Deputy Mayor Fawnen?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move into the Water Pollution Control Authority agenda. First item is citizens' correspondence or statements.
I would just like to mention that tomorrow night at Woodwinds at 7 o'clock, the Branford Exchange Club will be honoring of this underwater.
Oh, sorry. My fault. Seeing that, we'll move into unfinished business. Nothing listed. New business, request from Belfanti Companies for sewer capacity analysis for housing development at 32 to 50 Clintonville Road in Norfolk.
Good evening. This item is on your, on the agenda, more of a heads-up informational point of view for tonight's meeting. There's no action required. I've got to do a little investigation regarding the matter. But basically, just to give you an overview of what's being proposed, is the property owners of 50 Clintonville Road, which is a six-acre parcel on Clintonville Road in front of the ICE Pavilion. Currently, there's one, there's one house located on the property. They would like to put 25 to 30 age-restricted units on the property under a, basically a new zone that was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is basically a floating zone, would have to be applied to this, any property which they seek to apply the zone to. And one of the things, well, it was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission pretty much as a transitional zone. There's an industrial to the, to the west and the north of the property, residential pretty much surrounding it, half-acre properties across the street, but it was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the zoning regulation, to allow for some type of in-between type or higher-density residential developments on certain properties where they abutted an industrial zone. It's a developer's intent to move forward with trying to get this zone applied to their property. One of the things that's required for zoning regulations, they must be served by public water and sanitary sewer. Really, and the issue that comes up is how much flow do they generate? Just making sure we have adequate capacity for it in our sanitary sewer system that discharges to the North Haven system. Because they're looking for a little, you know, for more than just a single-family R-40 type density, they're looking basically for about four to five times the normal flow that you would get from a single-family residential development. So I'm putting on the agenda more, just to make you aware of it, I've got to look at some of the capacity analysis in the downstream system and what we reserve for capacity when we purchase it from the town of North Haven into their system, and then bring it back to the WPCA for consideration and action.
When you say single-family, you're talking about freestanding?
Yeah, single-family, freestanding, basically, it's a, it's basically a one-acre zone. So under the normal zoning passive right, you could put six, six houses out of a six-acre parcel, basically. Some of these transition zones or a zone like this would allow for a higher density.
Is that what a floating zone?
Well, a floating zone can be applied, it's a, the regulation creates the ability to apply it to certain parcels within town. But again, they've got to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission to get it applied. And if they're favorable with the Planning and Zoning Commission, then they have to come in for a site plan application with a detailed development for the project. But again, right now, I'm just making you aware of it, that this is out there. My, my goal is to come back at the next WPCA meeting with findings and then possible action by the WPCA. The other issue too is they're required to pay a special connection fee. So depending on the number of units, it would generate some capital funds down the road, which right now, we're pretty much running out of capital funds. So it's all part of the consideration of WPCA to see if it's favorable to the system.
So this is the property, like if you took a right to go back to the ICE rink, it's on the corner?
It's on your right. It's at the corner, that's correct.
Okay. And then, and then it butts up to that road that goes back to the ICE and Honeywell's on the other side?
Yes, that's correct.
There's enough room there for 25 to 30.
Well, this is what they're throwing out there. That's part of the whole planning and zoning, you know, analysis as well.
Just traffic alone?
And again, the capacity analysis at WPCA, how many units do we have capacity for in the sewer system? And the Planning and Zoning Commission, they have, there's some subjectivity to their, whatever their findings are during the review process.
Wouldn't that be lower in terms of the land, lower than to go out to North Haven? They wouldn't have to have grinder pumps and stuff?
No, there's a sewer that goes right by there, that, that, that goes behind the Honeywell over there. It's all gravity fed, just like the ICE Pavilion is gravity fed as well. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Skir. Next item, citizens' statements and petitions under Water Pollution Control Authority. Next, we'll move into reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Permanent Project Building Committee?
No meeting.
Economic Development Commission?
Economic Development met last night, and they're continuing their evaluation of their business survey. They've received 59 responses. They will have, they will also be welcoming a new person to help out with economic development, Carrie and Mike, what is the fellow's name again?
Sean.
Sean, with a new program, so they'll be, he'll be able to help them evaluate the responses.
Actually, she, Sean McGrath, and McGraw, and she started today and who spoke between Carrie's office and my office, so we'll get her part-time to help with the analysis.
And that's about it?
Mike, did you say that was intern?
It's not exact, well, it comes through the Department, State Department of Rehabilitation Services. It's a, it's a program, training, work-training program.
It's a person trying to transition back into the workforce. We've done maybe like a half dozen over the years where the state picks up the cost for the first, I think it's like a six-week trial period, and then if we want to keep them on, become our employee, but the state reimburses us 130% of our cost, so it ends up not costing us anything. We have the value of the intern and the additional help, so it's a good deal.
Thank you.
Park and Rec Commission?
Park and Rec met last week, and one of the major issues on their agenda is on our agenda, so it'll be coming up.
Police Commission?
Police Commission will meet Tuesday, October 11th, instead of Monday because of the holiday.
Fire Commission? They haven't met yet. They're going to meet Thursday? Board of Education, Town Council, Communications Subcommittee?
There's no meeting.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee?
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee met on September 27th. The committee's still working on options to present to the Town Council, and we'd like to be able to do something at the November 15th Town Council meeting.
Public Safety Communications Committee?
Public Safety Communications, the next meeting is October 19th.
Planning and Zoning Commission?
Next meeting will be this coming Thursday, the 6th.
East Shore Health District Commission?
We're still looking for a town member to fill a vacancy on the board. We're working on the sanitarians' contract currently.
Thank you. Next item is Town Manager's Report, update on North Branford Intermediate School of Roughleaks and HVAC system.
Yeah, we're making some progress. As I mentioned at the last meeting, I had two companies scheduled for a visit today, Horizon Engineering Associates and also Automated Building System, ABS. So we met today out at the school. Actually, ABS was not able to make it. They called in and spoke with Bill Chody and this gentleman representative from Horizon, John Friedman. They spoke and talked about the system. So Mr. Friedman from Horizon was there to assess and to put together some notes in terms of preparing a proposal. I was hoping to have something for you on 13A and B, but when we get to that, I'd recommend that we just table that for the next meeting, that that's not ready yet. But they are making headway in terms of understanding the mechanical system, and it's sort of like with H, ABS and, and Horizon, it's sort of like, you know, computer, it's sort of like one side is the computer software side, one is the hardware side, if you think of it that way as an analogy. So these two guys, two firms and representatives coming together to figure out what's not working, and just some of the things that we went through today. We were up on the roof unit. In addition, John was taking a look at the system itself. Bill Chody gave him access to the terminal in the school to look at the software programs. He was able to identify a few issues, so then we went back up onto the roof and looked at things like the energy, energy wheel, dampers, the other drains and things like that, that we're looking at, anywhere that, that the system may not be operating at its full capacity, and/or there are deficiencies in terms of motors or belts and things of that nature. So the upshot of that is that they are going to reschedule, get those two together, and I'm seeking a proposal from each, those two companies. I think in, in the scheme of things, this is a very sophisticated program, a very sophisticated HVAC system, and obviously, if you tour the roof and you see the amount of units up there on the roof, it's, it's quite overwhelming in terms of what they have to cover. So much like the recommendation for Eagle Rivet to come in twice a year to take care of the, the maintenance of drains and so forth, I think a strong recommendation would be to have a contract with this company, these two companies, on a, on an annual basis or maybe even semi-annual basis to make sure that the system is optimized. And I think that's what we, we can expect going forward, and I don't think it's going to break the bank, but we'll wait and see what we get for those proposals. But interim, I'm looking for a short-term proposal that will help us troubleshoot and put this thing back on. I think what they're looking at is, think of it as a whole recommissioning of this, of this system. So soup to nuts, kind of recommissioning the whole, the whole system to get it working optimally. And so I'll get proposals that I hope to have for the, for the next meeting and put that to you and get you some more information. At the same time, Eagle Rivet was on the roof yesterday, they were on the roof again today, patching. They began the work on the holes and patches that they need to do that were not under warranty, and so they've got a good start on that. And I also sent out to you today, and if anybody wants hard copy, I can print out the Firestone report that came in last night, that clearly marks out all of these areas and what is under warranty and what is not. So there was significant amount that was under warranty still, and I have not yet had a chance to go through all of that, and I'm also asking Bruce Starling, our consultant, to go through that, and I'm waiting for his response. But there's a significant page and a half, I think, of items that are still warranted, and of course, that would take, that we would invite Eagle Rivet to come back at a future date to take care of all of those for Firestone on, on their dime. So we're making, we're making progress. I'm going to hope to have more information for you at the, at the next meeting on the 18th.
Has there been any estimates given from the roofing company on the non-warranty work from Eagle Rivet on the non-warranty work that they've been doing?
Uh, no, not yet, but now, you know, now that they've been, they've been up there, and I would expect that I can try and get some, some estimates from them. And I, what I hope to do for the next meeting is to try to give you a running tally of where we are in terms of, you know, the consultants, the chorus and band room had to, you know, take the carpets out of there, the dehumidifiers they had to use to, you know, dry up the rooms and cleaning, try to assemble those bills so you, we can all have a, a running track of where we are. They're not insignificant, I mean, they're, I mean, a couple thousand dollars here and there, but I want to give you an accounting of that for the, for the next meeting, in addition to looking at some proposals from, from these other two companies, Horizon and ABS.
Michael, what did you see, and I apologize to the council, I was supposed to go to that meeting today and I just couldn't, couldn't get out of work, so. So I, I did talk to Michael several times while he was on the roof and in the school. What did you see yourself? What did you see when you went into the library?
Library's got some issues that I was unaware of, and I think it's more of air capacity, air issues, not any outright leaks that I'm aware of, but more of humidity.
Maybe something like some of the system not working?
The system not working, right, not working optimally. And when you go up there, when we got up to the roof, because we did go in the bandroom just to show chorus and bandroom, to show the representative, John, from Horizon, what we were dealing with, and when we got up to the roof, you know, he opened up one of the units, and, and you could see clearly the energy wheel hadn't moved. He pushed it himself, and you see the dust and, like, like, like looking at a filter, like a car filter, you're looking, saying, okay, this is new, this is old, you know, and you can see, and it really, you know, messes up the system when, when, not that it's, it's hard to say that that single one thing, the energy wheel, isn't the smoking kind, but combined with all of the other things going on in there, if there's a damper and an energy wheel and a belt and all of these compound, then you've got, you've got problems. And that's, that's because the system is very large, and where you set a room and air intake and how the, the air circulates through the building, and it's a very large building, you've got issues in terms of management, making sure that the software is running, and what the software tells you is actually what's happening up there on the roof. So that's why we have to have ABS and Horizon to troubleshoot both of those and make sure that the software program is working and that the actual mechanicals and engineering, you know, electrically is, is what's, what's happening up there. If the, if the chiller or the, the machine is, is shutting down and cycling off too frequently or not frequently, you know, those are all, all things that they've got to explore and investigate within that.
So it's largely a maintenance.
Well, it's, it's largely, right, about how the system runs, and it has to be, it has to be monitored. So I, I think, you know, strongly that a recommendation that if not once a year, if not maybe twice a year, or actually, I think it's sophisticated enough where they could log in remotely to check the system, and if they can do that from their desk in wherever they are in New York, to check it once a month. You know, I don't think it's going to, you know, break the bank, and that system is, is so large and so sophisticated that, and let's face it, it's six years into the, into the project, you're going to have some, some of those energy wheels and things failing anyway, to some, to some degree, one way or the other. So I think we want to do the best we can to optimize the system and then, you know, try to reduce all, all the problems. Once we figured out the, the water infiltration issues, then it's, then it's, you know, if the pan doesn't get emptied or the pan can't drain, and it's just water in the unit gets sucked into, into the, into the vents and down the, down the system, you got, you got problems. So even the water, and getting the water out and draining properly, all those things have to be checked, and it has to be a regular maintenance schedule, otherwise, you know, it's a domino effect. Things start to, you know, a damper gets closed, an energy wheel goes out, it's a domino effect, and then you got holes all on the roof, you got water, you got water coming in everywhere, and it's just exactly what we, we were facing.
I read the Firestone report and looked at the photos from it, and frankly, I'm shocked. It looked like there's been problems, the reports have said that there's been problems since its inception, so that's a decade, and it appears to me that things happen, and they're being ignored. They're not being addressed, they're being ignored, and I think anything that we do at this point that constitutes maintenance agreements, so that we have some caring eyes, if not expert eyes, on it, is something we need to do.
Yeah.
So Michael's kind, I'm not. So in a nutshell, our heating and cooling system in that school is at least seven times smarter than anybody we've had looking at it in the last decade. And so what, what bothers me is, you know, I'm sure that I could convince you guys to go along with me and get this thing solved. We don't have that authority. The Board of Ed does, and that's why I want to, I'm bringing this up now, because we need to wait for these reports from the, the experts, but we can't fire the guy that's been maintaining it, and he needs to be fired. We can't fire the guy that's been in charge of the maintenance of the buildings, and, you know. It pisses me off when I leave work in July and go up there, and I don't know if you were there or not, and we see this energy wheel with a belt off and not turning, and then our, our people in charge of maintenance, and they hire the guys to go up there and put a new belt on it, and it doesn't turn. That's unacceptable.
And that's one of three that were not turning.
That's unacceptable, and the only way to fix it, you know, if you have, if we have a failure that's a decade long, we certainly do not want to go forward as a town with the same people that have let it fail for 10 years, or eight years, or whatever it So when we finally get these, these reports, and I don't, and that's why I'm saying this tonight, to ask Pat, or to ask the town attorney, what can we do as a council other than send a strong letter to the Board of Ed that says, you guys got issues? It's all of our buildings. I mean, you know, we can't, you know, I mean, the reality is, we shouldn't be involved in trying to solve this, but we have to be, because if we're not, it's going to end. So I don't know if Pat, you know, for the next meeting, you can tell us whether we have the ability to enter into contracts to maintain our building, or whether we can, all we can do is, you know, keep sending Michael over there and, and, you know, keep poking the bear, you know? I mean, it's like.
I think it's a sad state of affairs, when I read that as much as I could today, that all those conditions have existed, and no one at the Board of Ed has been saying anything over the last couple of years. And I've attended, and I know Rose and I have been going to a lot of them, I've never heard a word, and it's, it's mind-boggling that those, that many issues have been occurring and nothing's happened. And I think Al's right.
Al, what you mean, they put a belt on it and the wheel didn't turn? It was froze up, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why the belt probably was falling off, you know?
The computer showed that?
Or it's worse, all right? Because I, I don't know for sure what they did. I do know that, and Michael was there, in July, we were up on that roof, and these things weren't turning, and it's like, hey, the belt's off here, from the guy that installed it. So he's telling us, this is part of your problem, you know, why this isn't working. So here we are in October, and there's one of these things that hasn't turned in six months, or a year, and a computer system that tells you it's not turning. So that's, so on the roof, it was, on the roof, it was, you know, lacked of being done correctly from the beginning in some cases, and then having some leaks and not, and some maintenance issues. The heating and cooling system was just either, you know, probably what happened is, and they're very smart, I mean, most of the houses I, I build, the heating and cooling systems are same thing, the guy that came out here, you know, all this, you know, they, they can adjust it from wherever their home office is, anywhere in the world, providing it's done right, and that's the problem. Ours wasn't, ours wasn't done right, and it was not up online either, was it? So he couldn't do it remotely.
We, yeah. We couldn't get access to it remotely.
Those things should have been done.
Right.
Day one. But, but anyway, Michael's spending a lot of time on this, never mind the rest of us, so we can't, we can't get these things fixed and let it go. Somehow, we have to make sure that this stuff is maintained by the right people, not just somebody that, and like, again, whoever has been maintaining this heating and cooling system, or maybe nobody has, but whoever has been doing it, it's over their head. And so we should just not keep going to them to, to try and fix it, whoever they are. I don't even know who they are, but.
Well, we know who is responsible for identifying leaks and not just putting a bucket under a leak, but notifying somebody, getting that remedied, right? And that's been going on for a long time, that, we know who's responsible for that. We're looking on their computer screen, seeing that there's a problem. We know who's responsible for that.
So, yeah, but again, they're all under the Board of Ed's control, so as usual, I'm the bad guy, but somebody has to, somebody has to be the bad guy. You know, this stuff, it can't be. So anyway, when we get our reports from these guys, we'll, we'll see where we go. So anyway, when we get our reports from these guys, we'll, we'll see where we go.
Yeah, I think it'd be a wise investment. I mean, at this point, if they're going to recommission the whole thing, put it back to where it's supposed to be, sort of reset, if you will. And then going forward, you say, hey, not only that, you got Eagle Ribbit coming in three times a year or whatever it is, and make sure the maintenance is done so that the actual drains aren't clogged, right? And then make sure that the system is, well, you know, so that a motor doesn't burn out or a belt doesn't go or a damper is jammed or flywheel or the energy wheel, whatever it is, it gets done. And then we, you know, it's a sort of a checklist going forward and that way, you know, because once we, once we seal the envelope, we should have no problems. I mean, those, those seals hold up better than the actual, you know, original material. So the only thing I worry about is, is once we get the envelope sealed, is, you know, the issues with, with windows. So, you know, that's something we have to have to cross that bridge when we get to it because I, I want to be able to rule that out as well. And there's some companies around, we could do some, you know, you know, water testing and, and other things. But that, that's, that's where you could also be getting water, depending on which angle and how hard and when it comes and how long. Brick, brick and mortar and the windows, we, we could have some issues there. And that's the last, last thing I think we've got to look at as well.
So then the only, the only thing I'll say is, we all know I can be real critical. I do want to reiterate this again, that Michael has, from our direction, taken this thing by the horns and he's on top of it. And I commend you for that.
Thank you.
Because, because it, everything that's happening over there is coming out of this office. And, and he's, he's on top of it. So we, we will get to the bottom of it.
But you're, Al, you're telling me he shouldn't have been.
What's that?
He shouldn't be.
Oh, it should have been brought to our, if the Board of Ed didn't know what to do anymore. And I mean, it was, it was stated at a board meeting earlier this year when they were asked, why is there nothing in your capital budget? If you just spent 20 minutes talking about the problems at NBIS, but you didn't put anything in your capital budget and the response is, quite frankly, we don't know what to do. That this should have been addressed. Come to the council a couple of years ago if, if that was the issue and say, we've exhausted all possibilities, we need some help with this or whatever. But just to ignore it and we're all taxpayers and we're paying on a $35 million school, it doesn't sit well with any of us and nor should it and with the taxpayers. We're paying for this on here. So it's a little hard at that point, especially for me, is we need a new high school. Well, I would be very leery going to renovate the high school given the conditions of NBIS and what has happened over the years.
Well, it's the problem of the conditions being allowed to fester.
Right. I mean, it's just, and so...
And to, you know...
Why would we want to jump into another large building, school building project when you haven't shown us that you really care about the building we just spent $35 million on and will be paying for, for, you know, another 15 years?
Speaking of maintenance programs though, we have other infrastructure in town aside from the board side that should we look at, you know, maintenance programs for like the antenna? You know, and like town hall, you know, I mean, what are our options there too? So we don't develop those same similar problems elsewhere. Now, should we have somebody climbing up on this roof? Unless we already have it, I don't know. Making sure that the gutters aren't clogged up here or that our wheels are, the air conditioning is working here properly?
Well, we do have one working with Franny that does building maintenance. And I think they're doing a pretty good job of staying on top of...
Basically, every department has a maintenance budget for their conditioning, heating system that looks, gets looked at once a year in the spring or once a year in the fall.
So we could all, you guys still, please still on the budget? But all our, all our rooms, he's been on all those, all the drains. Just recently, an issue with the vault, the air conditioner, but...
See, it's a pretty easy fix. We have to put Franny in charge of building maintenance.
But interestingly, the, the air conditioner in the, in the vault started to have problems on Friday. Well, our guy couldn't do it because it was a train proprietary thing. So we had to call Train Guy and now Train is the brand of the unit. So now we're trying to make a decision whether we're going to, we're probably going to replace it. Because it's got the old gas in it and it's, it's high tech stuff there. And it hasn't worked really well, humidity reselling. We've always had a humidity problem in the vault since, you know, we've been doing all sorts of different things. So we're probably...
Okay, we move that to that.
Mike, just one last quick thing. In the chorus room, I remember you were discussing about the air being trapped in the temperature chain. Have they come up with any solutions or ideas what they're going to do to move that air in there?
They're going to look at it. I haven't heard any specifics other than, you know, where that, that energy wheel in the unit was the one that fit the chorus room. I mean, he, you know, that's the first thing, you know, he checked and he said, yeah, and that's why we went to that unit. I mean, so he has all the schematics and when he saw it on the, you know, computer, he goes, okay, this is where we're going. And then he goes up there. The other, the other thing is from a previous walkthrough, you know, the, the whole, the timing is such in the, in the summer. Bill Chudy was saying that the deck was really hot and, you know, underneath was, was really cold creating a dew point and moisture and so forth. It was suggested that we, we do a bore sampling to check the, the roof deck to see what, to confirm the insulation value just to see if that is, was done correctly. So that's one more thing we'll, we'll add to the list. I've just got to coordinate with Bruce Darling to figure out where the best place is to do that, to find, you know, the right, right sample and just to confirm and then, then patch it after we're done.
And once you get that unit up and running, it may change.
Yeah.
We hope.
Yeah.
We hope, yeah. I mean, I think a lot of it has to do with, right, how much, you know, what the, what the system's doing in terms of air, pushing air, you know, bringing air in, that sort of thing. And, and even down to the, you know, the set. But, you know, if they're not, they're not, if a motor's out or if the, if the system isn't cycling right, a whole bunch of things, it's, it's pretty sophisticated. So, I mean, half of it, I get, half of it is just, you know, even, you know, it's, it's a lot to grasp, so to speak. We'll keep at it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I only had, Mike, I only had two other things. One that Fran just mentioned, wanted to alert you to, that is going to cost us some, that's going to have to come out of contingency. I mean, we're not talking a small little system here. That, that system just crashed in the vault and she's got to, clerk's got to maintain those records, obviously. So it's probably, I don't know, get, just guessing, $6,000, $7,000 potentially on that that's going to have to come out of contingency. We'll know better in the next few days. And I'll bring it back for the, for the 18th, but we're going to have to get somebody working on that. Twice that? Yeah.
I said, that's just pure guess. Not by anybody. We're just talking up tonight. I'm trying to wait for it twice.
So this stuff is your headache already? It already is your headache?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
So if we change it, then we're going to do it in house.
Okay.
But we're trying to...
And when did this go down?
It started Friday, I guess.
It's only Tuesday. You guys got like nine years and 280 days before you're supposed to address it.
We're going to let the board set the standards.
Right. We're waiting for the contractor to give you a number on repairing it.
All right.
Al, you could tell Lisa it'd be nine years.
I'm not telling her that. No. You know what? That's, is a perfect example of the way there's a problem and it's, and it's getting addressed. You know, that's the way it's supposed to work. So I commend all of you for that.
The last item I have is I, I put in, should be in your folder, a letter from the Department of Transportation, informational purposes only, nothing that you have to take action on tonight, but I will bring it back for the next meeting. It's the parcel land stuck between Route 80 and 139, that triangle piece. We get right of first refusal. Apparently, there's a developer who's interested and has put a price tag on there. That's why the 185 is, is in there. So, you know, that's just food for thought and we'll have, we'll have you take action on it at the, at the next meeting. There's a timeline and we have to respond within the 45 days, but we'll be able to do that on the 18th.
Where the dentist, that triangle, where the dentist...
Yeah, there's, there's several parcels there and this is just one of, I believe, like, three or four different parcels that are...
Different parcels that are pieced together, but it's that corner.
Right on 139.
It's the radius just north of the dentist's office and over to Central Plaza, the old Route 139. That whole vacant piece in there. It's about, it's something, I think it's that major...
The developer set the price?
I'm not sure who set the price. I think the state comes up with something and they start. I think that's my understanding of it.
Well, I think this is the, what they've agreed to, I guess. And then we have a right of first refusal to match, I guess, match that. But didn't want you to think that you had to make a decision tonight, but...
Mike gives me Dairy Queen, right? That wedge?
Right across the...
And there's a map, we'll get you the chosen, but it's, again, it's not a big piece, it's the corner piece and that's where the value is. It's a difficult piece for access. But I think we're looking to consolidate.
The access is on 139. It's not on Route 80, right?
Well, right now...
It's frontage on Route 80, but it's not really accessible.
Again, the, I don't envision the access coming directly from that corner. Somehow they tie other properties together, they're probably look to access it further down unless it's not, it would be mine.
Can we send this to planning and zoning? So we should have more information on this next meeting?
We have the map and we have the state, we have probably that letter. In terms of future development, that's, I'm going to have to wire it and then hold it up.
That's all I have.
Next item is community events and presentations.
Dan, is it?
As I was saying an hour ago, tomorrow at Woodwinds at 7 o'clock, the Branford Exchange Club is honoring two North Branford emergency responders. Assistant Chief Mark Ametrudo from the Fire Department and Detective Sergeant Sean Anderson from the Police Department. It's at 7 o'clock. Tickets are $40. And I hope as many people as possible can join and salute these folks along with Guilford, Branford, and I believe East Haven.
Thank you. Next item, citizen statements and petitions and correspondence under the town council agenda. It's not here. Next item is resignations and appointments. Appointment of Stephanie Malkin to the Daniel Cosgrove Animal Shelter Commission for a term expiring 9/30/2020.
And Stephanie is here in the audience. Do you have any questions for her? Anybody have any questions for Stephanie?
I would make the motion to appoint Stephanie Malkin to the Daniel Cosgrove Animal Shelter Commission for a term expiring 9/30/2020.
Second.
Correction, on second. Who?
Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fornin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Congratulations, Stephanie. What do you got, a free dog with that? Okay, we'll move into unfinished business, discussion in action, review of North Branford Police Department Communications Antenna on Parsner Hill Road, table from 9/2016.
Not much to report on, on that. We'll have to carry that over. I don't believe the numbers are in because I, I do have a communication from Lieutenant Reba on the schedule for that is supposed to be Monday, the 10th or Tuesday, the 11th. And as we all know, weather pattern may totally take that out of our hands with whatever happens with Hurricane Matthew. So...
I said it at the right angle, too.
It's going south.
Yeah. So hopefully, it, it does go out to sea and we miss and they'll be able to go. So we should have, we'll know, we'll know more when they track this thing at the end of the week. And if they think it's okay to go, they'll go and we'll report out for the 18th, hopefully.
We did get the hand-built part of the antenna in, in-house?
I'm sorry?
Though, one of the antennas had to be made, custom.
Right, custom made, yeah.
Is that in-house?
Yeah, I, I thought so. I thought, I don't know if Anthony has anything, but I believe that was on water or on its way. Yeah. We'll just have to wait and sit tight and see if they can pull it off on Monday or Tuesday, but we won't know.
Next item is discussion on concept, the multi-town dispatch center with Branford,
Yeah, so we, we got to the point, I think, I think it was left that people wanted to sleep on the numbers, I guess, so to speak, or look at the, look at the numbers, digest the numbers. And I think as a group, I think the council was looking at, previously it said, you know, if the numbers look okay, then I think the next step would be to engage Attorney Ryan on the, you know, collective bargaining side of the issue in terms of if it made sense to move forward. I mean, obviously, we're in fact-finding mode, gathering information, numbers were presented. I'm just looking for guidance at this point as to what this body, how this body wants to proceed.
Well, I, I think that the union issue is an important one. And I think, I don't think we can move forward until we know exactly what Attorney Ryan is going to work out. So I'd like to make, I'd like to make the motion, the North Branford Town Council hereby authorizes the town manager to speak with Attorney Bill Ryan about the impact of moving the dispatch center will have on the union.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
So by doing this, this does not bind us to anything, correct? Is it just a fact-finding?
Yeah, it's not binding. I mean, it's just, it's another step in terms of, right, another step of gathering information to say, okay, if you, if this body, if the council is comfortable with looking at the numbers and saying, okay, here's what it, what we think it's going to be to, to move, then, you know, are we going to hit a roadblock in terms of the union or do you start that process that you're giving this, you know, the green light to, to proceed? That would be the, to me, the next logical step is to begin the process with the union.
I don't think you can really proceed unless we, we know what the, the union situation.
So before we vote on this, Anthony, I didn't, I didn't bring, I didn't bring the numbers with me?
It's in the, it's in your, it's included.
Oh, okay. So just explain that to me, Anthony, and anyone else. It's, so it's, it's that, how much money more is it than we're paying now? I know he'll be faster at finding it than I will.
Well, I think the preliminary numbers would be 58.
Right. It was, if we can find the minutes.
It depends, it depends on, amongst our options, this would be 58, 58,000. And that's including the state reimbursement.
Right. That's the worst case scenario. There's no factoring in there of the 911 reimbursement. I can't seem to find it on my page.
Oh, that's not, okay.
It's page 24 of...
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, what, what was done was I met with the finance director from the town of Branford and we identified costs that would be eliminated on our side of the equation. We then factored in what he would charge, again, estimated number. We eliminate about $502,000 in cost. They would charge us about $561. Incremental difference would be about roughly $60,000 additional cost. Again, that's the worst case scenario without factoring in any 911 rebates. The alternative plan that was plotted out was to stay in-house and put a second dispatcher in place, remaining independent. And that's about a $550,000 cost to do that.
What would we have to, we'd have to add, like, three people?
Four and a half.
Four and a half.
Four and a half equal one spot.
Four and a half to get one person?
Correct. Because we have four and a half currently to get one.
See, that friend, and you do four and a half people's work. Well, don't tell them that, Al. Okay.
So how were the costs, or the percentage derived from Branford?
Uh, it's percentage based on population, I believe.
I don't know, it was about a sixty, thirty?
Yeah, sixty-six and thirty-three split. We're thirty-three percent of the deal, and they're sixty-six.
So, so then probably going forward, there would be some kind of a contract, if we get that far, that would say-
Correct.
We were responsible for thirty-three percent.
Correct. We're on that subject, you have a sheet in front of you, kind of unrelated to that, but- Kind of related, there was some discussion last time about how our deal with Branford and the animal control, and we were hesitant to get involved with this kind of a deal. Well, what I did was, if you look at the very, I, I keep track of all the budgets on a rolling basis that Mike and I use at budget time. You start at the far left-hand side, the oh-one to two, and the incremental increase is four-point-eight percent and so on. But the four-point-four-seven percent increase was the four years prior to us going to Branford. So if you figure we're on a trend of about four-point-four-seven percent increase year over year, the italicized numbers would be the path we would have been on if we stayed independent. So that first year, while Branford did charge us forty-five thousand dollars, we would have been paying about seventy-six thousand, seven hundred dollars if we had stayed independent, and our trend was, was identical. The forty-five thousand dollars, for those that were around back then, was a number pulled out of the air. It was a number that, we were in a situation where our animal control facility was, needed great repairs, we had an animal control officer that was retiring, Branford had excess capacity and wanted to get another revenue source. So the number of forty-five was just pulled out of the air, with a three percent annual increase. So again, if you look at all the years going forward, year two, we would have been about eighty thousand, we paid forty-six, eighty-three, forty-eight. Even the thirteen, fourteen year, you'll see the, the jump. What happened was, this council agreed to a renegotiation of that deal, that was, Bonnie was the manager at the time, and Branford came back and said, let's have a basis to divvy these costs up, and the basis was calls for service. So while the first, first pass was forty-five thousand dollars, three percent increase, year over year over year, with no relation to calls for service, they said, let's change it to, what we use for sewer, you know, to base it on flow and things like that, so we changed. And even at that point, the far right-hand column thirteen, fourteen, when it went to ninety-eight, we would have been a hundred and eight if we had stayed by ourselves. So for everybody that thinks the Branford deal was bad to the town of North Branford, just, just quite the opposite. It really saved us a ton of money. So again, I know there was, there was talk about tying this conversation into the dispatch and how it was a bad deal, and quite honestly, I think it was a very good deal for us, saved us a ton of money over all those years.
And then there's another correlation between what Branford pays for sewer and what we're, we are now paying for sewer, which is four-twenty-five. Well, Branford pays the same, but they offset their costs from their general fund. So that's how, so they do pay around, you know, it depends on your situation, approximately a hundred and twenty-five dollars, but the rest is offset from their general fund.
Well, Anthony, thank you very much for this report, this is extraordinarily helpful, at least for me.
Yeah, I, again, the comment was made several times that, you know, the Branford deal was bad, and it really ended up being a, a very good savings for us.
See, I'm not, I, I'm not following, I don't know how you got to a hundred and eight thousand. What are you paying a dog catcher in that, at a hundred and eight, what do you think their salary is?
What I did was, I took, if you look at the, the three years prior to us consolidating, we averaged about four points, four-point-four-seven percent year-over-year increase, all our costs. It was four-point-eight-seven one year, it was down the next year, it was up ten, average those together, it's about four-point-four-seven percent year-over-year. So if you run that same number out, four-point-four-seven percent year-over-year, out to thirteen, fourteen, theoretically, we would have been at a hundred and eight thousand.
Okay.
So it's, it's an assumed number.
So this is a theory?
There, I said theoretically.
Because I'm pretty sure we could advertise for a dog catcher, and we'd have a hundred applicants at thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand dollars.
The other thing, too, the other thing, that building, that building was shot.
Just wasn't one, you had two part-timers on there, too.
No, I know, and I, we had to build it, we had to get a new building and air conditioning, all of the floors changed, you had to have air conditioning.
Yeah, and a vehicle, the vehicle was on its last leg, the truck that, that went to public works, so there is multiple costs that we avoided.
He was patting himself on the back, I had to say something.
I do still need to-
We should all pat him on the back, this is a good report.
Motion on the floor, right?
Yeah, motion.
Well, in the back up here, I'm just reading this about the small towns, it says that forty-eight small towns were interviewed, and, you know, most of the towns view PSAP consolidation as potentially a good thing, but many feel there are too many issues that make consolidation risky, and, you know, they list a whole litany of different things. Have we addressed all of those concerns?
We're not.
Dark police station, or, you know, limited cost savings, or no guarantee that the quality of service will improve for their residents, and fear that will actually decrease?
But when that report was done, it appears that whomever we had for representatives were in agreement that, that this was something that was an appropriate thing to do. It's not, it's, North Branford doesn't show up there just out of the blue, or we participated, apparently.
Actually, at the bottom, it says North Branford wasn't interviewed.
No, it says North Branford was in favor. Overall findings, what?
Overall findings, right. So we have East Lime, Ledyard.
Yeah, but I'm just asking about those concerns.
Well, there's a lot of concerns that are still on the table that we're working, working through. I mean, the first and foremost of those concerns is the union issue, because we really can't move forward until we address and find a solution to the, the union issues. But in our committee, we have been discussing, you know, the dark police station potential, different service potentials. But the union issue is, again, the first and foremost, so we had to move that forward.
And according to this report on the overall findings, whomever was involved in it said, in their, their judgment, a dark police station was a non-issue, and at this point, we have better electronics to remedy that in any case.
We're at a standstill until the union issue is resolved.
Right.
So we certainly should go forward with it. And the motion's on the floor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Roll call?
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
No.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Next item is request by EDC for temporary liquor permit for Business Network two thousand seventeen, tabled from nine twenty sixteen.
Right, this is the issue EDC was proposing for the next year's festival, ahead of the start of the festival, for Thursday night Business Networking evening, and it suggested that we bring it to the council with request of having the event allow for alcohol, and having done some research, I thought at first it was, the issue was about getting a special permit, and, and that doesn't really seem to be the major hurdle. Major hurdle seems to be our own ordinance, that, under Parks and Recs on eighty-eight, chapter eighty-eight, talks about specifically the rules of conduct that no person shall bring alcohol in terms of the park or recreation area, so. I, I put that in, in the memo, and that's obviously a major stumbling block that this council would have to wrestle with. And I guess the issue is, you know, whether or not you, you consider the, I don't think it's been formally designated a park or recreation area, it's a, the open space field that you use for entertainment once a year, so. I'm, I'm just not sure where, where you want to go, but I wanted to bring that to your attention, that we would have to talk about that. I mean, I, I ran it by Pat, and, you know, his, his thoughts on, on that were that, you know, you've, you, you're stymied by the, by the language in the ordinance, so I guess it could be defined as a park or recreation area. Pat went the extra mile, if you, if the council wants to, to deal with it, there's plenty of time, and, and he suggested, we have this to hand out, language that you could amend the ordinance to allow this body, the council, to, on a case-by-case basis, handle special requests or permits for the serving of alcohol at an event like the one that's being proposed.
So how would we add this if we wanted to, it'd be like a public hearing?
Pass new ordinance.
Yeah, I'd, I'd not have you do anything tonight, but just package it up, get it, start the process for the next meeting if you were so inclined to do so. It would, put it on the agenda, move to a public hearing, that way we give people, you know, proper notice, we're not going to, you know, steamroll this thing through and, and give it proper consideration as any other proposed ordinance or amendment to an ordinance.
So would it require Parking Rec to ask the council for this exemption, and then we would?
We could do that ourselves, they don't have to ask. We don't need a liquor license, we have insurance that covers us for this kind of an event already.
Right.
So the only stumbling block is dealing with our ordinance.
Exactly, is the way I see it, yeah.
Okay.
Right, and that's got to be amended with a public hearing, so we need to schedule it for a public hearing if we choose to take public comment and then make a decision.
Right.
I think we, I think we should have a public hearing, is that what you were going to say, or are you going to say no?
No, I, I think, I think we should put it down for a public hearing.
See what they have to say.
I think it would benefit, you know, certain areas of our Park and Rec to, you know, entertain.
Okay, great, I mean, I can just pack, I'll bring it back for the eighteenth, and then at that point, we'll set the public hearing before the next meeting in November and, and take it from there.
Next item is appointment of Potato and Corn Festival, Festival Coordinator for two thousand and seventeen.
Yeah, there's a memo in, in your packet, and, and just in terms of a suggested motion, but I believe the, the Rec Department has, I think at their meeting, discussed that as well, wasn't, and, and the recommendation to bring that forward. The numbers in there are, are the current years, are two thousand sixteen numbers, so feel free to, I'm not sure where you are, if that, that rate is okay, sits well with you.
So the motion is not to give her a raise?
Well, as currently, right, as current-
The way it reads.
As currently right, it's just the current, yeah, you would, you would modify that any way you see fit.
Well, has anybody talked to her about her interest and willingness to do it, and what she feels her compensation is, should be?
Uh, I, I have not yet, we are scheduled, Lauren may, may be able to speak to that, we are scheduled to sit down tomorrow pending the, I guess it would be, pending your, you know, approval tonight of, of the position with, with Roseanne, that we would, as we did last year, sit down with her negotiating.
If we approve this motion, we're putting a cap on the compensation at twenty-two dollars an hour for a maximum of twenty-two thousand, six hundred dollars.
Which, which is what she's at right now.
So what's to discuss, I mean, we offer her the job, if she takes it, we leave it.
This is just, as, as a guide, you, you could say tonight, in, in terms of modify the motion to say the cap is twenty-five.
Was, was there a discussion at Park, at the Park and Rec Commission, did they come up? They, they did, and their motion, their recommendation is that they were leaving the rate of discussion between Lauren and the town manager, what they felt. They didn't, they didn't specify, they didn't specify a certain dollar amount.
Wouldn't it be more appropriate to authorize a town manager and the Park and Rec Director to enter into discussions and negotiations with-
Roseanne.
Roseanne, and come back to us with a request before we adopt a motion authorizing the employment at a specific rate?
I concur.
Much cleaner way to do it, yeah, absolutely, we'll put it on for the eighteenth. Instill me, in terms of the timeline, the suggestion, we'd try to get her for, for November, so.
Well, if you want authorization to, to negotiate with her, we can give you that, but I don't think you need it.
Right, because we already approved the position.
Right.
Just go do it.
Okay, great.
Will, will we have the final numbers from Poco, from Poco by then?
I would probably say no, we had another thousand dollars in today. Last week, I was sitting here actually in a meeting with some town council members as well, and I was opening the mail, there were bills still in there, so the bills are still coming in daily, so I'd probably say about another month.
We're pretty close, though.
Yeah, like I said, though, we got, like, four bills today.
Yeah.
But we are working on it daily.
Thanks, Lauren. Do you also have the mic on that one? Yeah, thank you.
Go on to new business discussion action, review of proposal from Horizon Engineering Associates for NBIS HVAC Systems.
Yeah, I, I would, I do not have that, so I would suggest both thirteen A and thirteen B, that we just, I'd just bring those back for the next meeting.
Okay. Move on to thirteen C, review of quote for repair of basketball tennis courts at Northford Park.
Yes, this is the, you should have this in, in the RS, RS proposal in your packet. Should be in your folder. And Lauren was instrumental, again, the, the quote there, but as she said in her, in her memo, or maybe it was in a note to me, that it was just bare bones, just the courts, but they-
Is this for two tennis courts, because I saw that stuff there, right, is two?
Two tennis courts and a basketball.
Okay.
Yeah, but the, the-
And one basketball court, is there, right?
So you can see the quote also includes the fencing and hoops.
So to me, instead of spending forty thousand on patching cracks, I would put this in next year's budget and see how it does.
Hundred and eight thousand dollars?
Yeah. They'll look like the ones in Route A.
Yeah, a big, brand-new concrete slab.
This is, yeah, this is going to the post-in, post-tension concrete slab, which is what we did at this one.
Potential any grant money to help us out with it, like, before?
Yeah, I think Anthony can speak to that, I asked him to run some numbers, so it's take a look, I don't know if you had a chance to do that.
No, but I can speak to it, right?
Yes.
We, about three years ago, started receiving a state project for municipal, a special grant that was for LoSiP, but were able to use it for other capital projects with permission from the OPM Secretary. In the fourteen, fifteen budget, we had identified three projects for tennis court repair, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars apiece, pending a steep grant that we did not use, did not get awarded. That same year, we did not fully expend that new state grant to the tune of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, anticipating that we would not get the grant, and we'd move one of those three projects, I think it was Stanley T. Williams, Northford Park, and Memorial Field, into that grant, so you have one-twenty there. As I gave you the CIP for the current year, I had a little note in that front page, if you recall, that there is some extra money in this year's grant that was unaccounted for. Bottom line is, the two hundred thousand dollars roughly you need to do this project and do it right, with the fencing and everything else, we could find in-state grant money that we've been, given, if you so choose to do it on that road.
As long as they bless it, but no reason why they wouldn't bless it, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's good news.
So how about when we do the school budget, you go and find a couple of million just to do that?
Is there lighting out there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because it never shuts off.
Yeah, we have to have a couple thousand for a-
But it's Wallingford Electric.
A good timer.
But it's Wallingford Electric, so it's really cheap, so it doesn't matter. This end of town, it's UI, so that's why we upgraded the electric.
So Anthony, can you look into that and get back to us?
Thank you, sir.
And just verify that it's, we could use it. Thank you. Thank you.
Because don't forget, guys, you're, they're really tough to use with the big cracks in them, so we're looking at $40,000 to fix the cracks.
Which will come back in two to three years.
So, you know, we gotta do some math there and subtract 40,000 from 200. So this is a deal.
Especially if we found the money.
You know what? After I saw the way, after I saw the way these things came out down here, I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't do it.
Ain't it been used?
Because, you know...
$200,000 if we don't have it, that's why we wouldn't do it.
If we didn't have it. But we can find it.
Mike, have you looked or asked CCM? They have never had a problem with these.
Post-tension concrete? Yeah, no, not, CCM didn't really have much information on it. You had to go to the, you had to go to the towns themselves, and I think when we went through that process a few years ago, you know, it, nobody's gone the 40 years, or the 20, 30 years yet, so it's...
The 50 years.
In theory, it all works, so...
I know we don't have a water problem up there like we do down at the North Branford Court, so that was just...
Yeah, it seems to me the science and the technology is far more advanced than just, you know, pouring asphalt. Hoping for the best.
Do we have a water issue on Memorial Courts? For any, when you...
On top of all of these?
Yeah, I mean, there's no, in the past, you haven't had any. I know on...
The mice love groundwater.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
When you hear this water, I...
But I remember years ago.
Yeah, that was before we did, we did over twice.
That was built, that was built in a swamp. That was filled in a swamp, filled in.
That's why the problem called the field.
Oh, okay.
It's all the same water.
Thank you. Okay, next is request to utilize town-owned parcel as access located on Maria Todd Road cul-de-sac.
Did you want the, what did you want to do with this information? Want to bring it back? If I could, go back to the last item to bring that back for the next meeting?
Well, I guess I'd like a little informate history, because I'm not real familiar with this piece, or what the, I mean, I read what was in our packet, but...
What was your question?
I was, I was...
This one or the one before?
Yeah, the one before, in terms of the tennis courts, was there something I missed?
Anthony's gonna investigate what money is available from state grants and come back with the number.
Okay, so we'll bring it back on the eighteenth.
See if we've got $200,000 before we even consider it.
Okay. Thank you.
We've received a request from Jeff and Lynn Andrews, who own property in both Wallingford and North Branford on the town line. It's off of Maria Todd Road, which is, again, off of Oxbow Lane in that neighborhood, the Northford section of town. They farm the property. They own a significant property in Wallingford, again, as well as two parcels that I've shown on the attached map, including your packet. What they're requesting is permission from the town of North Branford to access their property in North Branford off a town-owned strip at the end of Maria Todd Road. That strip was given to the town back when Maria Todd Road was developed, back in the mid-'90s, and it was left there for future, for future road to access the property, actually the Andrews property, which wasn't owned by them at that time, leaving potential for future development. Andrews are not proposing to develop it, they just like to access it for farming purposes at this point. Currently, they access some of the property from the Wallingford side, but they, apparently there have been some issues with Wallingford. In terms of their utilization of the property, I believe they've had some wetlands issues with the town of Wallingford that they're working on resolving. But again, bottom line, they're requesting permission from the town of North Branford to access their property in North Branford from that 50-foot strip at the end of Maria Todd Road. Things I'd just like to point out, they have access to the property, but they currently have to go through Wallingford to access it. There are some existing residential homes along Maria Todd Road, the vicinity of the town-owned property. There will be some clearing and grading and the placement of gravel drive in the town-owned strip to access their property across the town property. And just sort of as an aside, the North Branford Inland Wetlands Agency, I think about four or five years ago, gave a favorable report regarding the Andrews' utilization of their property in North Branford for farming purposes. I'm throwing out there, Jeff was intending to be here, Jeff Andrews, to sort of present his, you know, where he is with it, and what he'd like to do, a little more in detail, and I'm sort of conveying what he's told me. I mean, one of the thoughts, if the town was inclined to be in favor, but it'd probably have to be some type of revocable license agreement allowing somebody an access, you know, the town allowing access across the property. We may want to survey residents in the area if there's an impact. I'm throwing these things out. Anytime there's an additional curb cut or additional development, I mean, we get the calls, and sometimes people have concerns. Currently, that strip, it serves as a, there's a swell that drains to the back there, what it's showing us, Lot 8, which there's a detention basin. The water goes in there, and then it actually flows down into the Andrews property. That's been overgrown. I think it's probably been, you know, cleared out a while back, but it's, there's quite a bit of overgrowth in it right now. So in order to do something there, they'd have to, you know, cut things down to our standards and make it accessible at that point.
Kurt, it looks like there's frontage on Middletown Avenue for their property as well.
There's frontage on Middletown Avenue for that one parcel. They have a bunch of, there's two parcels that they own in North Branford, they're two individual parcels, and there's a Wallingford parcel they have as well.
So they don't have access?
Well, they'd like to utilize it. They've expressed it's a better access from the North Branford side and North Branford piece. And again, they've had issues with the town of Wallingford. I mean, they said that in terms of the Wetlands Commission, and there's been some ongoing issues with them.
I think, I think the access in Northford side, if I can remember, goes right up along somebody's house.
There's a...
Russell's garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly...
That's probably, that's probably why, that's probably why they don't want to access that way. They probably...
Oh, on Middletown Avenue, yes.
Yeah.
There's houses right next to where they want to put in a...
No, but this goes right through somebody's driveway, somebody's...
Onto Middletown Avenue?
Yeah. Goes right along somebody's bedroom.
What is this, a cornfield, or is it just...
It's a hayfield.
It's a haylot. He raises beef animals over there, I think part of it's pasture or a haylot. The Wallingford side, the same thing. He sort of cut it down, and it's, love its pasture.
There's two things that I'd like to know. One, what are these issues with Wallingford, and are we just buying whatever disease they own and bringing it on our side of the line? And two, we should not do anything without the abutting neighbors being advised that this is under consideration and getting their input. The map that came with our Dropbox packet seems to show two lots, one an L-shaped lot and one more traditional lot on Maria Todd Way. This map that was given to us tonight shows three lots. So I'm assuming this is more accurate, since somebody took the trouble to draw in a third lot on it, and there's at least two houses that abut this right of way.
Actually, if you're looking at...
Yeah, Lot 8 said it's not a lot at this time.
And actually, that got combined with Lot...
Seven.
Lot seven.
So it is, seven is an L-shaped lot as shown on what we got earlier.
Right. And on what is shown as Lot 8, a detention basin was installed, but the town hasn't he's been over that.
But we still have the owner occupant of Lot 6, and we really should not even consider this without getting their input.
And I agree. And even at the cul-de-sac, you know, there may be activity over there, and people in that area maybe, you know, have concerns, or at least give them a voice if they have a concern.
Right.
And again, a lot of it comes down to what it's to be, you know, when he accesses it, what's he accessing it with? Is it farm equipment to cut hay? Or is it, is he spreading manure over there, and he's trying to access through Maria Todd Road with, you know, trucks with manure in it? That's a whole different impact on the neighborhood. I could try to get Jeff here at the next meeting. I mean, certainly, he can answer. I want him here tonight, and apparently he had a...
And we ought to send notice to everybody that has a Maria Todd address, whatever it is, five or six lots.
Or if you could get up there one day and just maybe ask a couple neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, my thought would be have him come here, present what he wants to do before I even go out and talk to anybody. I don't want to rush this thing through. I'd rather you hear what he's proposing and what his concerns are, and maybe answer some questions, and then we take the next, if the town council is inclined to move forward, then we go forward with, you know, getting any input from the neighborhood.
Well, if, if we were to go forward on this, and he resolves his problems with the town of Wallingford, he doesn't need them.
We don't know that. We don't know what his problems are.
That's the way it appears. He hasn't needed it to date.
And I wouldn't...
And I'd rather have him answer that question, address that, because that's, you know, it's been his issue.
And I wouldn't...
He's the one seeking that.
I would be inclined to move on this until we heard from the neighbors either.
Yeah, but again, I'd like to get, make sure he's here at the next meeting, and he can, he can give you exactly what he's intending and from his perspective.
We have to hear from him and the neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, but I would think, let's hear from him first, and then if there's no inclination the town council to move forward, then, you know, at that point, but if there's inclination to move forward, then we'll, we can call everybody.
So if he wanted to subdivide this land, he would have a right to use this as a road?
That's how it was left.
So he could put a road, instead of cutting hay, he could put a road in there and put houses back there.
That was the intent behind that.
Right, without really any big deal.
No, I think he'd still have to come to us.
He'd have to go to planning and zoning.
No, the strip is our land. It's not his.
Right, but, I mean, you were on planning and zoning a long time. All of those there are utilized, because by law, you can't land-lock somebody, so...
He's not land-locked, he's got frontage on Route 17.
Right, but his, his problem here with Wallingford is, this is a separate piece. This was the Anderson Farm. Lynn Andrews is a cook from the Coag, Gil Cook and Auger Farm. So the problem he's having from, because I happened to be at a Wallingford Wetlands meeting like five years ago for something of my own, and he was there. To get from the cook land to this back field that joins, that's in North Branford, he has to cross the wetland. He went ahead and did it, because farmers have, they have a lot of rights in wetlands. Wallingford's not buying that he had a right to put a road through the wetlands to get to this backland. But, you know, I don't want to speak for him, I'm just, you know, he can come here and tell you his problems. But that's, that's what the problem is. They would rather have him come this way than keep running his equipment through what they feel is a valuable wetland that has a road through it that he runs his tractors through. So definitely, he should come, and I think that unlike, you know, unlike a planning and zoning application where you have a public hearing and everything, you know, if we do this, there wouldn't be a public hearing. So we certainly should let the, should find out what the neighbors think. You know, I totally agree with that.
Okay, I mean, I'll try to have him here at the next meeting and give you his perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is request to lift hiring freeze for Account clerk two, Tax Collector's Office.
Yeah, we have a pending retirement, and I'm looking and seeking your authorization to proceed with advertising and filling that position.
Suggested motion.
The North Branford Town Council hereby lifts the hiring freeze to allow the Tax Collector's Office to fill a vacancy created by the retirement of Gail Hart.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fornin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Next is request to lift hiring freeze for Supervisor and Park and Recreation Department.
North Branford Town Council hereby lifts the hiring freeze to allow the Park and Recreation Department to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of Patrick Presetier.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fornin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is approval of tax abatement for 228 Notch Hill Road.
This was a piece, if you recall, a few months back, there were several properties that were given to the town attorney's office to address for delinquent real estate taxes. This particular property, if you may recall, had three different owners throughout the span of the delinquency. Our system currently tracks delinquency based on the owner's name and not the property address or list number. So the town attorney's office reached a settlement with the title insurance company, leaving a balance on the 2010 grant list of about $1,700. There was also a credit balance overpayment from the 2009 grant list of $1,000 even. So the bottom line is about $782 needs to be abated by the council.
Suggested motion.
Be hereby resolved pursuant to an agreement reached by the town attorney, endorsed by the town manager, tax collector, and treasurer, finance director. The North Branford Town Council authorizes Kenneth A. Delfini, tax collector, to abate the remaining balance of the 2010 grant list taxes on list number 463 in the amount of $782.19.
Second.
Discussion.
So is there any way to fix that problem so it doesn't happen again?
It was actually, it was my error. I looked at the wrong screen, and I did not go back far enough, so it was actually my fault.
So is this an aberration, Ken, that we don't have to worry about this in the future?
I would think not.
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fornin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Next, we'll move into citizen statements and petitions. Next is adjournment, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.